Let's get started. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming today. We're already in an open session because we started with a closed session. But just for formalities, let's send to the board.
Mike Phelps.
Here.
Rodriguez, here. Sherby?
Here.
Estam, here. Fletcher?
Here.
Here.
And that's the list is, please stand for a moment of silence and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Father, Son, and Christ.
And next on the agenda is recognition of public comments. That was kind of a quick moment of silence, but that's okay. It's, I like to keep things moving on. As we are in the next point of recognition of public comments, I have just one from Angie Olson. She wants to speak about COVID schooling guidelines. Let's see, were the board presidents so correct?
Yeah.
It's okay, just go ahead. Give your question to the podium. Persons should proceed to the platform or podium, give their name and begin their statements. Persons are asked to refrain from making any personal comments regarding any individuals. And the board president deserves the right to a little presentation of five minutes. Thank you for the.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Angie Olson, and I'm here to be a voice for my children as well as I'm being a voice for the students that I have grown to love dearly for the last twelve years of teaching. I'm staying here for all of you that we, the parents, voted to be in those seats to address the new school guidelines that were issued and to ask that our district allow that masks to be optional or at point of discretion this fall. For the past three months now, so it'll be three months when the schools' kids start school, our children have been running around playing with other children maskless, doing sports activities, and even going on vacations without a mask. During the school year, many of our students were traveling across state lines to play ball tournaments without a mask. And in your handout, I included a map of schools in other states that are going maskless now, so COVID must not pass state lines. I often heard from my students and even my own kids how hard it was to vote to try a mask. It gave them a headache. It caused them to upset stomach. It was even really hard to breathe. One day, my son came home to me and said, Mom, when I raised my hand and asked my teacher to come over for a question, the teacher wouldn't come to me because she was afraid of me. My six-year-old asked me, or asked me, when he said, Mommy, I hate that I peeked in my teacher's face. I don't even know if she's happy or if she's even angry at me. In the beginning, we didn't know very much about the virus, but the more that this has gone on, the more we've learned and the more studies that have came out saying that it's not at risk for the kids. The CDC has even said that schooling is not a place of transmission. I know recently the State Board of Education released, and I quote, because here's the letter that she just released, saying that we are very happy to announce that the Illinois Department of Public Health has fully adapted the guidelines of school issued by the CDC. Also, she goes on to say in the letter that she knows that all schools may not be able to implement all of the health strategies, and that's okay. When you look at the CDC guidelines, which I've also printed off here, they go on to say that these things are recommended, not required. They also go on to say that since schools typically serve the surrounding communities, decisions should be made based on the school population, the families, and well, the community that they serve. However, if school administrators decide to remove any of the prevention strategies for school based on local conditions, they should remove them one at a time and put it in language and literature to communicate with others. I'm sorry, paraphrasing so that I don't run out of time. Last year was very hard for everybody, but especially for the kids. If we go on and look, so much data has shown how these restrictions have affected these kids. Anxiety, depression, and diseases. The CDC said mental illness has increased by thirty-one percent. They reported that suicide is the second-leading cause of death in kids ages ten to thirty-four. And even Robert Redford, the CDC director, went on to say that now they're seeing far more suicides than deaths from COVID. So I also gave it out in your handout. I put a couple of like studies that they're showing because ironically, in May of twenty twenty, the CDC released a scientific study in that they found no significant reduction in influenza-type illnesses with the use of a face mask. And in your handout, you can see I gave you this study, which is what parents and board set off in their kids' face masks, more than for a half a day of school, and eighty-three percent were contaminated. And it talks about what they had in them. They had pneumonia, tuberculosis, staph infection, all sorts of stuff on the inside of the dirty mask. The other one that I put in there is a study that was just recently released that kids are actually breathing in carbon dioxide, and that blood carbon dioxide level from their blood is very high at that risk when they wear a mask, so that's why I'm on the time. Homeschooling quadrupled in the United States last year. Private school enrollment has nearly doubled because of COVID. In Yalesburg, we came so far, and I just moved here six years ago, but you guys focus so much on social, emotional well-being. We've been focusing on a sense of equality and a sense of belonging. And right now, kids feel that they're dangerous and that everyone's afraid of them, and school shouldn't be that way. It's supposed to be nurturing an environment, and a kid should, nurturing environment, and kids should feel loved and cared for, not afraid of. One last thing that I want to point out is that no one should ever be pressured or punished or treated differently because they chose not to get a vaccine, for whatever reason, medical, religious, or due to those parents wanting to wait for full FDA approval. It shouldn't matter. No one should be looked at or treated differently. More scientific studies are constantly coming out of the side effects. And I put in the layers data. The website's there because it's fifteen hundred pages long, but there's forty, four hundred and forty-one thousand adverse reactions and twenty-two hundred mitokaryotic reactions down in kids in ages twelve to twenty-four. So which gives parents a lot of many reasons to question. So many districts in Illinois have already voted to make masks optional. And they have a few: Dunlap, Lamont, Vandelia, Red Hill, Warsaw, Waterloo, Highland, Elmwood. And so I'm staying here for you, asking you guys to, the board, to allow it to be part of parent decision, the people who take care of them, and allow the mask to be optional.
Moving on to presentations. Okay. And moving on further, we have the approval of the consent agenda. And the motion. Any questions, comments, concerns? Allison?
Mike?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yeah.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Sherby?
Aye.
Estam?
Aye.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Chumontes?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is focus area one, relevant skills that lead to employability. First up is the critical report, which we're going to take with that.
Yeah, so we did put in an ELL report from Scott Rasso, the director. So it's in your packet. You saw that. It was quite lengthy. I appreciate Mr. Rasso's thoroughness on that. But Mrs. Springer will be back. You know, obviously, she's finishing up her vacation, so she's going to obviously give you a verbal report.
Does anybody have any questions or comments concerning Mr. Rasso's report? Very good. Now we'll move on to the special education report.
Good evening. The only thing I'd like to focus on tonight is the special ed policies and procedures. They are eighty pages long, so we didn't put them in the board packet, but we did put the link for you to go to those. The major changes that took place from last year when we did a look at them is in the areas of IDP programs. Basically, some of the legislative changes that took place next year where parents have a right to review the records, they have a right to request an interpreter, and they have a right to request copies of service logs. Also, in the area of procedural safeguards, where all materials need to be sent to the parents in hand three days prior to the meeting, and some behavior is to be requirements as well as addressing assistive techniques. So those were really the only updates, and those were based on legislative changes that had happened through the year. So just getting caught up with them.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on to. Any questions, Mark?
No, I don't.
I'm doing pictures. I'm ashamed of doing pictures.
Next up, focus area two, facilities and assistance for acquisition, the building and grounds committee report.
Well, we're going to look at some pictures here of the Madison seven-eleven facility. We'll get some more discussion later on about how much we're on track and those areas we're not on track. What do you have here? Oh, this is a whole math classroom. Or not. Is that called a? Food sciences classes. Food science classes with the hoods above the stoves, new cabinetry. It's really, it's really nice. As you see, the ceiling has all the lights in it. It has the whole building, as you may remember, has water suppression, suppression throughout. There's the little water coming down. So this room is addition to, and the cabinets finish their floor. The ceiling is in, money in the classrooms, so if I see that, it's in later pictures. So these two are of the food science classroom. Yes. This is the front part. It was a larger area for a presentation. And we see, this is really nice. I like the hallways. If you see, all the classrooms have the two-by-four ceiling tile. In the hallway, we're using the smaller tile, and it's at an angle. So it has some visual interest in the hallway. These halls have all been painted already. And the lights in the hallway are these LED pieces that go between the ceiling tiles on the angle. So it'll look really sharp when it finishes. Okay. Oh, Rob, to the old area vocational center, which we're not looking to occupy next fall except for the art rooms, right? But many of the rooms that will be opening later on have already been walled in. Remember that. There are walk-through pictures. We have classrooms at either end. There are a series of special ed classrooms down the middle, smaller spaces. And here we see, oh, I touched the screen. I'm not supposed to do that. Thank you for fixing that, Allison. And the rooms will have light because they're capturing light from the ceiling in this area. So there's a corner light piece as well as a large doorway in each classroom to capture light. Okay, nice. Nice. Oh, this is great. This is the front hallway. We get upstairs, and here's the seven, eight car eating area.
Stand back farther.
Stand back farther.
Put your hands in your pockets.
Yeah. So the windows have all been framed in already. They'll get glass eventually and interior trim, but all the wallboard is up. This is the area that's the hallway behind what used to be the entrance to the balcony. Okay, that's all the functional space in the remodel space. It's a dead space. Now, we see here, the, that commons area, the floor's all been poured, so it awaits tile at some point in its life. And it needs a wall as they go up here separating it from the downstairs commons, which is here, which is the eating area for our older students. Which is real nice, isn't it? Well, this is how we decide against the window. Note, the windows here don't exist, but the other walls facing south are doorways and windows. So you have this huge amount of light flooding in the space. The build-out framing here, that's the entrance into the performing arts center. So that's, I stand on the other side. We'll hopefully have some pictures of that. The way we go on. That's from the lower level. This used to be the back of the auditorium, which is now the eating commons for the older students and hopefully a common area we may use in the performing arts center on the other side of that entrance. We saw an area where the wallboard is all finished. This isn't. Let's get into it. And remember, I mentioned those windows in the south that eventually will be filling in these two holes here as well as the doorway that'll lead out to our new band and chorus rooms, which haven't been done yet. Once again, this is at the ground level of the commons. This is facing these closed doorways with the entrance into the servery, the new servery, which was ready for use this year, which we never got a chance to use, but will be used hopefully come September. It looks really nice. And once again, there'll be a wall going up here separating the upper commons from the older students and the older one down below. Getting this right there, please? This is the secretary's center in the office area?
The second floor.
The second floor. All right. I saw these pictures of the floor. This floor wasn't here last week when I went through.
That will be the seventh and eighth grade office.
Eventually. When those students ride there. So these rooms, you see, not only, it looks like the only thing they're missing is some doors and glasswork and the finish of the counter. It's pretty exciting. Ceilings are in, lights are in. Okay. This is the main entrance. The greeting people are up here, security's back here, and then the area just to the east of it, let's see where the last picture, is the health center area. The nurses there. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, what am I looking at?
That's a solid surface bench in the main office.
It'll look better when we open. Okay. Oh, we're into the area. Oh, gosh. We need to cover all the rooms.
Yeah, work room for nurses' rooms.
Nurses' room and the bathroom. Pretty nice. The surfaces are on, the cabinets are in, ceilings are finished and separate tiles that pop in. Some more of your list. Okay, this is the, if you've gone down Fremont Street, the entrance outside would be nineteen seventy-four edition of the library is. That was all torn out and new steps and ramping was put in. And that'll be our younger student entrance, which we signed, which we talked about for many times, hours, two, three meetings ago here. But to tie in as an entrance, the steelwork has gone in outside. So at a smaller level, mirrors what we see at the main entrance of the high school, where they have the angled steel glasswork. This will not be glowed in. It'll have that. Ready? Ooh. Bye-bye mobile classrooms. And here, here's the former area vocational center, which is, you've seen, you saw some pictures of the interior of that not so long ago. And here we see, it used to be that drive that went all the way through. Now that drive doesn't go through anymore. We have the foundation has been poured for the addition to the ten-twelve wing of the building. Yeah, ten-twelve wing of the building. So we don't foresee this being finished for occupancy until a year from this part. It's complete this area though nicely. The addition here, you may notice, and the old heating plants have these high chimneys. They're not there anymore because we're not heating. We're joined to a hot water system. This is a boiler system. The pad behind there has been. That's where these cooling for the air conditioning are going on top of that. Is that right? I thought they were supposed to go on last week. But we're back. Did I touch that?
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
That's the last one I've got, is it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is that okay around here? Is it okay?
You're good.
All right.
Thank you, member Ryan.
Thank God and bless.
And next, I'd like to ask Mr. Lee Marbach to step up for horizontal construction and talk to us about our schedule ahead.
Thank you, Mark. So you saw a lot of the progress made. And Lori mentioned that some areas are on schedule, some areas are challenging. So kind of what we're going to go over today is kind of let you know the information I know based on the data as of today. We hope to know more next week. We have a really strong community. Things change daily or weekly. We're pushing to get more of finite dates at deliveries and stuff. So right now, we have our main drivers of delayed items. Lee, you pull up one second. I'm just looking at if they can change with it. This is prolific. So nothing that we say here is, this is set in stone. Okay, we just got some updated information today. We don't like it. And we're trying to change that information. So whatever you print or put on the radio, understand none of it's final. Got it?
Got it.
On the radio, that's the truth.
That's the form we know today, and as I said, everything changes daily. So right now, our biggest challenges are revolving flooring, floor covering, electrical switch gear, marker boards and tack boards, and lockers. So that's kind of our main items right now that are in flux, and I can expand on each one of those.
Question on lockers. So two meetings ago, we, force majeure kept on the lockers, and we had to pay another sixty-five thousand dollars for the lockers.
Yes.
To my understanding, that didn't change the timeline for delivery. I voted to pay them more, which I didn't reluctantly did. And now I'm being told I won't potentially have until September thirty. I throw the flag and say BS. So where we as a board, as a community, we got taken advantage of like a few, two months ago. Now I'm being taken advantage of delivery. What are my options to these folks to say, no, this is unacceptable?
Great question. I'd have to look into further options. I've had conversations directly with the manufacturer. I've gone past our subcontractor. We've had contracts with their conversation with them. They're working to move this up in their schedule. However, what they're telling us right now is they still do not have the steel for our order that they haven't ordered. So they're waiting on oil stock for our steel, for our, so this is one of the larger orders in queue. And so as soon as they have the steel, they're going to try to move this up, but they can't give us updated date. So right now, the estimated delivery dates, their ship dates are middle of September for starting that, September fifteenth to September thirty, if those shipments are live.
Is that the date October?
November, yeah.
November.
Yeah, order was placed.
So we didn't get in line in November?
So orders were placed in December, then went through a shop drives. We got final approval of our, you know, the layout and everything in April. And then what, June, I think is when the force majeure came out that they're canceling all the contracts unless people, and this wasn't just our school district. This was, we talked to the block vendors and others that was across the board industry wide. And as you'll see, there's a common thread that we're talking about, that is delayed, have to do with stuff from overseas. I don't know if the oil stocks in these lockers came from China. I'm not sure. I have vision. I know a lot of oil stock is not made here US anymore. So I don't know what's driving material delays. It is a common thread. We've seen it in other pieces of equipment, other furniture as well. So it's not alone to lockers, given it's definitely one of the bigger attacks. We could, you know, look at, obviously, we paid them, we could look and cancel the order together, but I don't know if that's going to get you even better at this point because of material price increases we've seen across the board. I know, talking about preconstruction here, if you order steel of our choice right now, you're on till after April next year. So steel is definitely an issue industry-wide. That's not what you wanted to hear, I know. Some other ones, marker boards are looking to be available August for delivery now. Those were supposed to be like today, this week, right? It was pushed out. The electrical gear, we worked, brought it out with Ameren. So that original design that got pushed through, I mean, was not reviewed by Ameren during the design phase. We submitted our snows through. It took a lot of work with the design engineer, Ameren, our contractors, to get approval, which we got last Friday. And so it took four weeks to get approval. That's which we're, now they're got us a date today of August thirty.
And that's the piece that when it gets installed, powered, it turns on.
And that's the ship date, and we get it here on the first part of September. And then flooring right now was supposed to be here at the beginning of this month and got held up in port. And now they confirmed the delivery is the twenty-sixth of July. Before floor covering is the same. So if you notice, a lot of the pictures don't have floor covering. When I say floor covering, I mean by, we have carpet. We are, you know, the majority of buildings follow the floor covering. And so the first pallets of that that all hit the job site are scheduled July first. So that's kind of our big ones. I should imagine the biggest one for us is the electrical switch.
So Lee, so the shipping boat, will they, will they let us know when that switch comes off the line? And where is that being, where is that built? Where's it going to come from?
So it's coming from Oregon. And we have looked and procured options for two-day direct transit, which is a team driver, so it never stops. And that's, that's what we need to get here from Oregon. So direct ship is four days. If you have your own dedicated truck, one driver. Truck, two drivers, you do team driving where it doesn't stop, it's two-day transit. So that's the best we can get with that.
Will that facility allow the district to pick it up at factory?
Oh, we could look at that option if we need, so. I said two days.
But you're not guaranteed that that's going to get on a truck as soon as that comes off the line. That's two days from when they decide to load it. So it could sit, produce for a week and never get on a truck.
Yeah, I feel pretty.
The way this, it could not get here until middle of September.
I feel comfortable talking to Ameren as soon as it's, because that direct shipment price with all that stuff is, a separate company, you can only dedicate a boat for that. As long as that trucking's available, I still pretty confident it'll load it right away. And it's not working with it to, you know, understand what that looks like. So.
Could you just talk about labor shortages?
Yeah, so, yeah, so flooring is one of those labor shortages topics. So we're getting a lot of square footage of flooring. Right now, the flooring contractor is, you know, they plan on certainly flooring. I said, are they able to happen? They're doing everything they can, prep work now to get ahead. But they have two, a crew for flooring contractors, two, two people. They have two crews that are available and on site right now doing all the work they can. But they've been reaching out to all the labor unions around, trying to find more trade workers, and they're very hard to come by. So they're going to continue to work and, you know, look for other skilled craftsmen to be able to lay flooring. That is also a challenge or hurdle we have that upstream. A lot of the labor halls are going to be, or close to empty right now. To try to find appropriate manpower. So that is another one. They've committed to working overtime, but overtime only gets you so far. So without the rest of your crew. So kind of based on that, with real looking at the constraints with, you know, power to fire main ones because the marker boards, lockers, and flooring, we can work contingency plans internally of how to do that second shift without students there. Working within this school district, we've done occupied schools and worked with the spaces that we have to. But electrical is obviously one of the hits. And so right now, I would say, based on the days we have, we're looking at like students in the building nine thirteen and that type of time. So that's kind of what that's looking like. And again, as we know more, and we're hoping that they includes, I feel like that's, based on the information I know today, that's not a worst case scenario. Right, so for everybody's benefit, so if that were to play out, that would be that the first two day, or sorry. We start with teachers on the first of September. So the second, third, Thursday and Friday, so it'll be those two days and the next complete week, Monday through Friday. So it'll be seven academic days. Or Monday we're off, sorry. So it's six academic days, thank you. It's six academic days that our students would have to be either in makeshift classrooms somewhere. But we don't, you'd have to find forty-eight classrooms. Or online in a remote setting, which we don't like. So we're trying to do everything we can to push that data from August thirtieth to, you know, if we had to do a couple of days. You know, that's not ideal, but that's tolerable. What we'd like to do and we can to try to avoid that. So the other thing is we have to work with the R O E to see if that's even an option. See if we can have that many remote days at the beginning of the state board to set rightfully so. We only want everybody back in school. This is obviously a little different than COVID. So we've got to look at some exceptions there. And right now, with everything being flux, we ask Lee to give us the worst case scenario. This is the worst case scenario. So I mean, as bad as it is, at least if it comes to pass that that's what it is, it's bad, but it's not October. So, you know, we're going to do everything we can to speed that up. But we're going to start building contingencies plans that we can hopefully get approved through the R O E to have some alternate site or alternate days. Or, you know, we've got to come up with some other plans now that we know when the data is.
Lee, question on cat generator. I just hate for starting another year and not use that server. So I'm assuming that the rest of the district will be in classroom and the high schools that want flux. Have you checked into the cost and the ability to have a generator to not only have the server in that part, but the pool? So that we can keep the pool circulating and the necessities of what that's. Because there's some more money in your contingency that you're going to come to us with.
Oh, great question. So yes, we have looked into that right now for the, the server. So that, that's what we did in phase one. We actually have a generator hookup built into that system. So that's up there. So it'd be bringing generator and fuel. But we have looked in that. The question is now figuring out, now that we know the date to go back and make sure it's sized. I think the first one we priced up, which was quite a bit of money, besides touring everything. If we decide based on the dates that we don't need all the comedy ovens and we're only pop, you know, powering the coolers. We'll be able to reduce that cost because we moved down the generator side, so we get dial that in. But we have to look at that availability and we're looking to start getting that lined up and secure and locked down. Regarding white hall, talked to the contractor name of today. I think with the way that building's fed, we can do that, a lot of that shut down ahead of time before the main shutdown. And may not be a lot of shutdown, but not as long. And so if it's only two, three, four days, we may, I think we're looking at not using a generator. Because it's not going to be a two-week shutdown anymore to try to save the district money. Not that we're going to have as much negative consequences for having power outage for a couple of days in that, in that space. And if we need to like get a dehumidifier off of a small one-ten generator, we can put a few of those in that. It's really about controlling humidity versus circulating pool. So we're looking at those options of doing smaller generators for white hall. If it's to do a large generator back feed, that new equipment's going to be costing kind of harder. So we're repeating a permanent feed at the same time, but we are looking at those options, so yes.
Any, I won't hold you to it, but any ballpark on what that big generator's going to cost to revenue serving?
I would say it was about ten thousand dollars for rental and nobody had fuel costs on top of that.
Per week, ten thousand, five hundred gallon tank that had to be filled every two days.
Okay, so farmer envy says go bigger is better. I would not go down in size on a generator. I would go up because there's going to be a skeleton in there that you don't know that you got to run. So, you know, we're, we're into this thing over our head. So I need to get the big one.
And I would say based on the timing now, looking at the timings that happen when the elementarys are in school, I would tend to do that. Originally we were hopeful that if it was happening before full food research production was happening, we could scale back to just the coolers. But there'll be some prep work, production work for those elementarys.
Because if we go small and Mr. Davis tries to fire a oven and we trip it. I would be a mad individual, so let's not short that.
So I think the biggest thing we can look at now is trying to minimize that shutdown to help with the, well, general mental and also field assumptions.
So don't we need guys lined for generator and soda?
Yeah, we've had initial conversations with the contractor, but we didn't have a date until the day. So now that we have a date, we can start actually getting started.
Can they guarantee that white hall will be shipped out two days?
I thought you left. I don't work with Ameren, but I could see what that duration of information going off.
Cool that size, that circulation for forty-eight, that's a. Especially sitting here, not a great situation.
Right, so yeah, we'll definitely look into that, see what we need to.
Fuel costs, so also the math, I would talk to the local distributors. Tell them about gallon fuel. That's a couple of us, three tankers. They could give us a, go raise out.
Definitely not good news, but thank you for taking the time.
So you surely got a good, so there's always a silver lining, where's the silver lining?
I don't remember this from last, so one of the big issues we did have were doors, right? I don't know if you remember hearing about that. So they're, the first loads arriving this week. So we're going to have all the doors going, which, one thing you can't do is occupy classroom with doors. You can manage without lockers, both doors and lockers. So that wasn't figured at all.
I'm not sure if it goes out for big holes.
So. Yeah, we're going to see, yeah, so we are not going to allow students in the building with those big holes in the walls. So we've talked to the contractor, that, the locker contractor, I'm going to be putting temporary plastic with last, screwing the walls to close up all those openings. That would be easily removable at night for them to pop them off with a lockers. So yes, we've thought about that. Yeah, I would agree. I'm not comfortable having big holes in the wall where someone can be pushed into or tripped. Or whatever the case may be to disturb things back there, so that we are, we will not allow, yes.
What about the front windows? When you go down Fremont, I've had to look at plastic for months.
So they're, they're on site today. They started trying to install them and then the rain picked up, so they closed it back off. So you'll see when those load them off. So I think the weather, whether I look at it for tomorrow, I think maybe we'd say it looks good, so. Yeah, so they are on site now, so that's the weather dependent things. I just, you know, happen to be a decided very healthy.
Moving on, next agenda item is a good response and highest P E requirements discussion.
Okay. Thank you. So as you heard, Angie presented some information for you today. We did need guidance last Friday, which has become the state board education's way of doing things. Dumping things up Friday at four o'clock. And then they provided a clarification that really wasn't a clarification. It was just a repeat of what we said before. That echoed, built onto the C D C's tag. So as of right now, everything is basically, it's up to local discretion in terms of what we plan to do. So what I would tell you right now is the, if I know anything, is that the ISPE and IDPH will likely modify, adjust, change their recommendation at some point between now and, and start school. So we do have the benefit of a little bit of time. And so what I would recommend right now is just sit tight, don't make any lasting definitive vote. Just because if some, if the state comes out and changes what they're going to do, then we got to go back and change. And then we're backtracking what we communicated to the parents. So I think it's important that we communicate something that we know we can stick to. And so, you know, it's certainly within the realm of possibility that it stays the way it is. And then, you know, we would have the option of making it mask optional or whatever it is we want to do. We just have to make sure that it's something that we can live with, something we can enforce, something that we can support. And we'll, we'll have a couple of meetings between now and start school, between board retreat and our next regular meeting. So we are meeting, we meeting superintendents in this region. Are meeting with, together and with health departments to try to make sure we're all doing the same thing as much as possible. Because we don't want, you know, people saying, well, I'm going to go to that school, or I'm going to go to this school, or I'm going to move or do that. We think consistency for people to be able to do. So, you know, at this point in time, I think it would be wise just to sit and wait for a little while and see where the wind blows with the, with the C D C and IDPH. Before we get any last vote.
Wasn't most of that regarding students, the information that she sent out?
Both of what?
The letter from the state superintendent.
So the state superintendent said that the C D C has said that local authorities have the right and would encourage them to work with the local health departments to make sure that they're doing something that can be supported. So what the C D C and IDPH recommended in that, in that guidance document is that you, if you are going to remove mitigation, that you do those removals one step at a time. So whether that be changing your distancing from sixty to three feet, plexiglass dividers, face protection, whatever that is. That you don't do something whole clock, look at things in pieces. So we have the benefit of starting last from all the area schools. So since we will start until September, I believe that, that right now, sit, consider after speaking to the health department. All the other facts over the next couple of weeks, I think that would be my. Because facts can change. We saw last year change all the time and everybody got frustrated because the guidance we stayed changed over. So. She starts, we see what, what the, if the guy changes it, they say this is definitely enforced for six months. Well then, you know, we can make a different decision. We can make a good decision. I think right now it's just because the thing happened on Friday. I think it would be wise to give a little bit of time, make sure that we come out with a plan. Whenever we feel good that we know we can count on the guys.
Thank you.
Let's see, no other questions? We'll be moving on to item C. It is change order for reconsider approval of a junior senior high R P zero-three-seven circulation desk.
Yeah. So this change order request is, was brought up for, is pricing up for proposal for circulation desk in the center. So there's two desks there. There's one, I believe, uses wise is for library, one is for C S S.
C S I.
Design, sorry. So there, those two areas. So original bid documents did not show the desk in there. I think there was still an air inside at the time whether any furniture was built in. They added some prices and built an option. I don't have it right in front of me, but at least in the package, I would say the material is forty thousand dollars and some change. And it's a, you know, four thousand.
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred. So it's going to learn that for today. And then it was a note that the funding for this is coming out of a different budget. Yeah, question that if you can, we can speak to what part of the circuit.
So these are two different, they're called circulation desks, but it's not a traditional circulation desk for C S I. This will be where the drop off is for any student or staff member who needs tech fixed in the new building. So that's, because that's where the C S I class will be on that half of the classroom. So we're taking fifty percent of this charge from brighter funds because C S I is part of the business department. We're taking fifty percent out of R L I X, which is low-income schools grant that we get each year. And then we also have a one thousand dollar honorarium to apply to the library side of this for Mary Petrie. Who was a longtime employee in the district who worked in the library, I think for twenty-eight or twenty-nine years. She sadly passed away this year and the family gave a one thousand dollar donation in her honor. And we'll be putting a plaque on the circulation desk in her honor.
Will we begin the circulation desk on time?
Well, that area J will be ready for a while.
Yes, once we get approval of this, we'll do this shot. The area J, I think we're targeting for Christmas time, did it turn over yet? No, sooner. That'd be a lot. There's no wood on this. There are not, no metal.
Who designed this? Did yours stand?
No, they designed it. So we're similar in overall design.
I should go eat, it looks really nice.
You've got three examples?
I know.
Next up.
Allison? Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
Aye.
That's him. And question, Ms. Hunter?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, we're going to discuss the junior senior high plaques.
With your permission, I would like to just push this off to another month. We're, essentially what we're doing, we just don't have a knock again. So this would be the same plaque as the ones at King and Lombard and Steel, but we would add to. So just, we get this done in a timely manner, I believe these would be the last names that are added. But so we have, you know, we have to add measures for this last ones. But we don't have a lot of them. But if you look at the ones of the others, it's just two things.
Why are we moving into another meeting?
Well, it's just to show you what it looked like, it all was in discussion, so we'll show you.
I mean, I can see.
It looks like the others, I don't.
We'll show you. Essentially it'll be on one of the pictures that we have. It's not like an approval through intelligence or something. I think we brought it to the attention to make sure we knew what names could be on it. That was a.
We're.
Question about. This is just a heads up. It really isn't for discussion. It's just a paper.
Okay. Let's see, move on to focus area three responding to the changing needs of our community. First on the agenda is considering approval of the district photographer bid. Again, all the information from Mrs. Ham and I appreciate all of the work that she's done for that. And I'm going to take that item and move on to agenda item B, consider approval of the milk bid. The motion to.
So.
Sorry, second.
I guess we'll be this day on the.
Well, actually I'm going to have Mr.
This is.
I'll do this about milk and bread.
Okay.
So thank you. I'm, I apologize. I'm a little bit unprepared coming up here, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, tell us all your. Was he giving you the numbers?
Yeah, that's absolutely.
I was just holding him for you.
Thank you. So, okay, we had, we sent out for milk and bread bids, the milk bid from, came back from Prairie Farms and from Ider. As you can see, Prairie Farms was the lowest bid, a little bit of an increase, two point three-three percent, but quite a bit of a price difference in the milk there. Do you guys have that information in front of you? Um, then for the bread bid, there was quite a bit of a difference too.
That's the second, we'll get to that.
We gotta go.
Bread first.
The price went up a little bit, but not a lot, it's the same value I reported.
So if I can say that, I was very pleased with the milk bid, especially after some information that Mr. Davis shared with me earlier this week. So US Foods, who's one of the largest food distribution companies in the United States, canceled all of their K twelve contracts in the past week because of potential unexpected food shortages and inability to meet the orders. And so thankfully, we worked with Coles and we're part of Co-op and Mr. Davis and his group do a great job of preparing and securing our orders. But considering everyone has seen the price of the food at the grocery store go exponentially in the last few months, and we're expecting to see that, that these milk beds, even though we saw a little increase, I was very pleased that it was as small as it was.
If you think that Coles is immune from this, if you're against shortages, you know, guys are getting it worse, the larger suppliers.
Oh, absolutely. And in fact, we've already spoken to Mrs. Pinkroll. We're gonna be sending out some information to remind parents where to access our menus and to tell parents that we may have unexpected changes in our menu due to delays in food products. So we're gonna let everybody know that it may say it's Taco Tuesday, but if the Coles truck doesn't come in on Monday afternoon, what would be?
Sure, you surprise.
It could be. So, no, we fully expect that and we're pointing to their families for those changes in the menus.
One thing we gotta remember, milk comes from a cow and a cow produces every day. So milk, unless there's a delivery shortage, milk should not be an issue.
Well, and I was gonna say, milk has only been shorted because of transportation, because farmers are pouring it out in the ground because they can't get trucks. But yeah, so it should just be a distribution problem, if there is.
And I'm sure distribution problem plays into US Foods' problem as well as, you know, your centralized warehouse, you're sourcing out that. Now in school districts, you have four drivers. Uh, and I have been in contact with Coles, I'll be placing, actually, be placing Coles orders for the first two weeks of school items. That hopefully makes sure we're secure for the summer.
Then that's why we need a generator lead, because he's planning ahead, I don't want him to say, oh, not two weeks worth.
Literally. Just for information concerning milk bids, I was curious, so I've looked at the milk bids for the last three years and they consistently go up. Last year it was like over a ten percent increase, you know? And the year before that, it wasn't quite ten percent, I don't remember where it was, but it was a three percent or something. So I noticed that the milk bids continue consistently go up, but the bread bids.
I will tell you though, so this is my twentieth year of going to bread bids. I can tell you that there is definitely a rise in the polls, there are times where milk bids react and bread bids have gone down. So it's just, right now, we have to be in a cycle where the milk bids are going up and bread bids are staying flat, that I've seen in the opposite.
About eight years ago, there were downstate schools that didn't have a source for bread because there were some Chicago area companies that closed down and there wasn't a distribution network for other companies like Bibbo and Billy's to basically distribute to smaller school districts. And the school district that I was in, we actually were going to Walmart every day to purchase bread because we did not have a contract anywhere to fit those services. So we're fortunate that we actually do have milk and bread bids in this area and that map's not going to loading up as previous every day.
Set the sales.
Okay, no further comments, will you move?
Shurkey?
Aye.
That's him. Fletcher?
Aye.
So Montes?
Aye.
Plan?
No.
Oops.
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Look, moving on to certain people of the bread bid.
Talk to us about that.
All right, and so quickly, we had two responses for the bread bid. And Billy's is our current distributor and they came in at the most, most better of, well, knowing.
Is there such a thing as a multi-year commitment? The reason I say that wheat is in a global shortage now and I can see bread and things to a point going up. Will they, will they commit to us on a multi-year situation?
That I don't know, but that I can find out.
Because that, that will, that one will come back to haunt us.
I doubt, I'd probably get anybody to do that because they're just so many of the futures, you'd probably pay for it. You know, with milk bids, there's almost always a testator. I don't know why that doesn't wanna get included in the bread bids, but the milk, you can have that, where if the costs go up, they're, you know, they have the right to change the price. But that's important. Uh, they're in business with the lacquer people. But, uh, yeah, you're exactly right, and that's why I say, there, there have been times where we've seen bread bids go crazy and milk bids go the other way.
But fortunately, our reimbursement from the federal government goes up each year. So a little bit of increase that we do see that's covered by an increase in our reimbursement.
But yeah, I think that we are more concerned with the supply this year because of occupied by our schedule this spring. Because that's probably gonna be a gap, we're gonna be short sometimes.
Allison?
That's him. I, measure, all right, so that's us, I, plan?
Yes.
Oops.
Aye.
Maria's?
Aye.
Shurkey?
Aye.
Next item is consider approval of the custodial. Need lotion?
Somebody.
I was hoping we'd get a whole lot of one for that.
Who knows about this?
So, Mr. Spring is not, was not able to be here tonight, so he's the one who's been working for Wilson Paper for the last couple of months. But I was at King the day that Wilson Paper came down with all of these items and we had a group of custodians over there and it was the greatest thing in the world to see. So you had probably six or seven custodians standing around watching Andy or custodian at King on the writing floor cleaner, making the sharpest, you know, cleanest corners you could imagine, and it was like he was driving a motorbike. Like there was, it was the greatest thing. So it was unbelievable how quick and how efficient these writing floor machines were. We're actually going to be looking at our job descriptions, particularly at the high school, once it's finished, to create some efficiencies with how we currently clean at night in our big crews. The other things, we were having difficulty with our port coffee floors in the kitchens, they were really hard to get cleaned. And Wilson Paper said we have a scrubbing solution with that and brought a scrubber and it was amazing. Like the shine just came back up, they were clean, they were wonderful.
Some kind of curb demonstration.
And then the, I did not see the window cleaning machine, but if anyone was driven by GHS, you could see that our front windows, the ones that are still there are incredibly dusty and they're difficult to get to. So this has an extension and will allow us to clean windows frequently and efficiently and safely. So it's very exciting. I will say that our custodians are incredibly hard workers and they have not been given a lot of new equipment, probably in the last twenty years, to be quite honest. And so this is much needed, much deserved, it will help make them more efficient and they're very appreciative of it.
Well, a little bit longer story, I wanna make sure we cover all the bases. So four years ago, we started the discussions about building cleanliness and what buildings were gonna remain. We entered into discussions with Mark Reeves, so the director of maintenance, that we needed better equipment, but we wanted to wait until we knew what building's period had and what was gonna be there. We've had a lot of changeover in our custodians and we do have wonderful custodians that work very hard. So we, we actually wanted to do this a few years ago, we thought it was gonna be a little baseball, because we were gonna add some equipment to be, to be. So we're a couple of years past when we really wanted to do this, but we feel like now that we know what building's brand and everything's pretty solidified there, that now it's an appropriate time to invest in this equipment because we really do have a lot of outdated stuff in this department. So, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I'm just curious, these machines are larger, where do they store various foods?
They can get in boiler rooms, so if you think about like in King, when we took out the big boilers, we have more storage room. So the machines aren't very large, I mean, it's. It's about the same size, it's really a little bit longer, if you imagine the push behind. So, no, we shouldn't have a storage, how you know?
Question I have, since we're doing this, is self enough of the writers?
For right now, we may be coming to you to add more, especially when we add A and B, section's A and B in high school, which is the new addition and the ten twelve. We may need additional ones, but for right now, this is what we need to get our year started for all of the other things.
So the price, so once again, is now the time to buy them?
I can check with Jason on availability, they've been holding these machines for us since beginning of June. So just because of our board cycle, we couldn't get on the June agenda and I said, well, for this amount of money, we can't commit to it without the board approving it. So it's really rare that they actually have the equipment on hand. I can check and see if there's any additional ones that we can get and I can bring that back in August.
I'm very glad you're buying for us, thank you.
Thank you.
Some more questions? Allison?
Fletcher? Aye.
So Montes?
Aye.
Plan?
Aye.
Maria's? Aye. Shurkey?
Aye.
That's him?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is personnel, and first on that is consider approval of the personnel. Any more? Any comments, questions?
I have some positions. Nice question.
We have a full math department now at high school.
Allison?
So Montes? Aye. Plan?
Yes.
Oops.
Yes.
Maria's? Aye. Shurkey?
Aye.
That's him? Aye. Fletcher? Aye.
Next, consider approval of the exam stamping.
Don't move.
Questions or comments?
Just had two. My suggestions are, I, I shared this with Dr. Ask, but not before he gives it updated. There is, I can't remember what, what section it is, the number of days for resignation was not, we have to put the number fourteen in. And then my only other suggestion is to gender neutralize all of the language, so either do he, she, they are there or just do you, we, they, or.
I have those changes.
We'll just make those changes, Allison?
Plan?
Yes.
Oops.
Yes.
Maria's? Aye. Shurkey?
Aye.
That's him? Aye. Fletcher? So Montes? Aye.
Okay, next, consider approval of the custodial maintenance MOU. You motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Uh, so we met, Jen and I met with the custodial union June the fourteenth. And we had some, we settled a contract a few years ago, but there was some clarification lingering issues in there regarding vacation primarily that we needed to fix. Neither side was wrong, but it was just an interpretation, but it was really kind of creating some persistent problems in the summer of how we use vacation, how to make sure we have enough people there. And then secondly, we were having difficulty finding people at our starting pay. And so we were trying to put some pay rates into commensurate with what we did with other life positions in the other unions that we just negotiated with. So we provided some pay increases and attempted to get more people, which we can say we've got quite a few more applicants for our custodial positions that we just posted, so that's positive. Because we really had a difficulty not just finding custodian, but custodial substitutes. So we feel really good about that. So there are some pay increases, but also some, some gives on, also sunsetting who gets on J V pay. And fixing some vacation issues that were persistent.
You have included your seats on the insurance committee, how many do they have previously?
They had one.
So that's good, number three.
Uh, the other, yeah, an important part on there is some protective language for people to meet a certain threshold so that their health insurance can be protected so that they're not being priced out of having insurance as well. So we feel like that's a good start to try to go into the other unions as well, because we feel like that's something that's gonna be really important in the future as we try to look at what our insurance rates are, knowing that unless something changes, the insurance costs are gonna continue to go up. A menu of options for people at different price points to try to ensure it's important.
You got that? Allison?
Oops.
Yes.
Maria's? All right, Shurkey?
Aye.
That's him? Aye. Fletcher? So Montes?
Aye. Plan?
Yes.
Next, previous, previous update.
We still have one outstanding grievance with the, the GEA regarding approval of graduate courses. So basically, the nexus of that grievance is some contract language that, that says how and when we must approve graduate courses. We have this feeling right now regarding who issued the graduate credit. So if, if a school, our position is that the school doesn't really offer that class and it's really just something that there, there's another division of their school that provides a credit for that, it's really not their school, it's more like a money grab kind of thing from, from some universities. But we don't feel that those positions, those classes should be counted the same as typical graduate courses from credit institutions. So we're really trying to make a tighter look at what is actually grad credit, which is not. Because some of them should really argue, you see in words professional development, there was that one grad. So it's really trying to reflect that grievance. So the GEA's position is that we should continue with what, with just allowing it as long as it came from that college to be allowed. Our position as well, really, what does come from that college? If it's not offered, that college doesn't really come from that college. So that's where the whole dispute is. So it's ongoing, we've been having really illegal conversations, but we're trying to work the issue.
Any questions? Move on to report on the FOIA request. Excellent, Mr. Shurkey. Let's see, and we're almost at the end of the meeting, the comments by Board of Education. Start on my left, all the way down. Done?
Done.
Okay. Aye.
Um, some comments on the building, I know things are, things are not going as we had wanted, but it's still, in the end, is gonna be the right thing. So even though I'm, I'm a little put out on some of the things that are going on, it's the world we're living in right now. I guess I don't have to like it, but I gotta live it. And then kudos to all the staff again for where we're, where we're sitting today. Very, very good spot. Also, especially, I think we're close to being fully staffed, our math department fully staffed. Also, you know, GHS North, I was questioning what was gonna happen, and we have a plan going forward for that, and that's a good move. I appreciate that. So everybody out in listener land, stick with us. We're, we're doing all we can to get, do the right thing and get everybody back in these schools and moving forward. So for the paper and the radio, we're on the right track. um for the paper and radio, we're on the right track, so it'd be nice to see a positive headline on the paper on these days, thank you.
We began this meeting today with a presentation about what we're going to do about going back to school in terms of the virus, which has taken over six hundred and three thousand people in this country. Carefully don't forget that number because it has been serious activity, I was, I read it today, heard that Knox County is the highest of all the Western Illinois counties in terms of our immunization rate. At forty-four percent, means fifty-six percent of our population is not immunized, and I, why not reopen for everyone? We need to get more people protected because we're going to see spikes and it's not going to be nice, and I'm worried. Uh I, uh you're supposed to talk to your doctor and listen to your doctor says, and imagine most people's doctors will recommend it. So I, as I, if the community ever does look at this, there's one more person who's recommending if you're not immunized and you're eligible, please do so for the sake of everyone else in the community. It's. Okay, the other item though is solar, I'd like an update sometime, and the solar field behind Lincoln School in Willard. Why don't we have?
Well, yeah.
One that hasn't been checked. And yeah, we need to.
We haven't got that much.
Pretty great, can't even excuse the weather this time. Uh when they sold this, this project, I really wanted it. This shouldn't happen during the school year, it should happen when we're at recess, construction crews will come in here.
It's just a very serious.
Right, in the parking lot, right, we need to give these things stuff. Because once again, we're a forward-looking school district and this is just part of that, and people appreciate that. Thank you.
All the way down. Member, that's there.
So um I think like the information of the setback of school starting wasn't ideal, but I have to say, I was really excited to see the pictures tonight um because I got a chance to go in um just like a week ago and there was quite a few updates from then, you know, the carpet, um the walls down old GBC, so you know, I was pretty excited to see that, so that was the silver lining, I was mentioning that as we were looking at that. So pretty excited about what uh that's going to turn into. Um as far as masks are concerned, you know, the goal is to make sure everyone's safe and continues to be safe. So whatever that looks like as we make those decisions going forward, um that goal is just ensuring safety for everyone going forward, so that's all I have.
Your stories.
Um so I agree that we have to wait with the COVID discussion because there are updates coming out daily, but you know, as Member Lion said, Knox County, I don't know what Gilzberg's numbers are, but Knox County is only at um forty-four percent and that's actually um rounding up because it's at like forty-three point something. Um and we can only be a safe ass, right, this is, this is one of those cases where individualism and the the ability to make my own decision for my own self um is actually kind of superseded by community and because we are responsible for an entire community of schools. Um it it's not just one person that you're impacting, uh when you may end up uh with this illness and in a building in a classroom. And I would say that uh as adults, we are in a lot of control of what the situation looks like. We as parents, and I include myself in that conversation because I am one, I get to choose how I talk about the situation to my students, my child. I get to set that tone, I get to um talk to them about what that looks like. And there were a lot of numbers thrown at us and mental health challenges for our children are on the rise for a lot of reasons, not just COVID. Uh social media um is a big impact. So um in addition to monitoring whether or not your child wants to wear a mask or you think a mask is appropriate in school, double-check social media, double-check the kinds of um interactions that they're having and the kinds of conversations you're having with them in in other areas that also contribute to mental health challenges um for our children. And then use the resources, right? Our community has been unfortunately affected by a lot of uh reductions in government aid, funding, you know, funding for mental health services um from the federal government, from the state government, so mental health services are needed and this district actually has done a lot in the past four or five years to try and provide those services within our schools because our community cannot um does not have the resources in the same way that they used to. Um and so I encourage those parents that feel like their children are um having some particular issues to reach out to your administrators and ask how to um make use of those resources that we have provided in the schools. Um the other thing that I will say, um I know that it's way ahead of time, like it's months, but District Two oh five is hosting the October Western Illinois Division Board Meeting. It is um scheduled at this point tentatively, I believe, for Oc- October twenty-sixth. So, so please, um board members, uh make sure that you mark that down.
We were doing a Lombard, Lombard High School meeting, we were waiting, but did we commit to the Lombard?
I think that is the one that we said, that if the high school is ready, we would be willing to move it over there, so I'm looking at the.
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth. And I have downed that the meeting starts at five, but I could have just put that so that I'm not stuck at work and that I'm at the meeting in time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put out updates, yeah, I think we could definitely put it on.
Okay, yeah.
General officer.
Oh, yes, and I am currently the chair of the Western Illinois Division, so please help me work good by attending the meeting. Um and then you, I, the last thing I'll say is actually a future agenda item, but if I don't say it now, I'm going to forget. Could we add um future use of uh buildings that are no longer inhabited to our next agenda? I know that Buildings and Grounds is going to talk about that, but just to kind of put it on their radar for the community, know that we are looking at those things.
You want a Buildings and Grounds report and then a discussion, or?
And you know, just to know for the community, that Buildings and Grounds is looking at that and we can have an update if there's one possible at the next meeting.
That's quick, and I don't have any powers either, well, I guess I'll let Member Phelps. Yeah.
I'll take the nurse. At the last meeting, we had a citizen speak of the grass and the situation at the solar field behind Gallowso. So the next morning, I drove out there, um his points are well-taken, uh it might have been exaggerated a little bit, but I would like to know um who is, if the people are supposed to mow under there, we need to keep that. And then uh there is some grass taller in that fence, so um point taken, um you know, that that's the thing, I I take pride in that. I know we're under construction in a lot of places, but when you have a citizen come to us like that, I think we need that. I know our custo- all our people are, I know they got a lot going on, but the weed eater for an hour out there would make us look better and then we need to get on the solar people and say, hey, that's your, that's your responsibility.
And and it is the solar people's responsibility and I've been out there at least five times since then, uh just spot-checked it and it's better. Um I agree, there needs to be people, we already, just some people understand, we're not even allowed to. So it's the solar people's responsibility, it's their responsibility, so I've already sent a note to Solar Vokes asking them to come to ours and that's going to be part of the.
Moving on, do we have any additional future agenda items?
Yes. Can we get an update on the registration numbers for next year? And while I ask for that update, I will also remind everybody in the community, and here's something that was really great news that could be printed because I think our community uh for some reason doesn't still get this. We are zero fee.
How much does it cost?
It costs zero.
We're not for school supplies.
Zero, because we provide school supplies.
What if I want to play sport?
Zero.
You mean zero sports?
Somebody will say that we have zero sports.
I'm not even sure.
There are no activity fees, there are no school supply fees because we provide them, you don't get, you'll go to the Walmart, you'll go to Target, you'll go to whatever store is in the community and they're going to have school supply list and you're not going to see one for District Two oh five. That's not because teachers didn't submit them, it's because we provide them. We, the district, you don't have to do it. And when you go to register your student, you don't have to pay for anything unless your student's taking drivers out.
Or one in Parker car.
Or Parker car. But that's it.
Those are out.
That's all. No other fees, zero.
Mr. Did we raise the tax rate at Willes?
We did not raise the tax rate, no we did not, and we are the only school district that I could find anywhere in Illinois, and if there's other ones, please join the club, they should also get some accolades, but it is zero fees to register, to attend, that we're providing all school supplies for students, um they're able to participate in sports for free.
Then surely our fund balances went down.
No, they did not.
Oh, no way.
As a matter of fact, we have one point two million more dollars in our operating funds this year than we did last year.
So our fund balances went up, our tax rate did not go up, you don't charge fees and it just, it takes you about five minutes to register.
And we're providing more social emotional supports or mental health services.
Better buildings, air conditioning, free computers.
And maybe soon, lawyers.
That's, that might be a rich too.
And these things are funded through um our federal grants, through asset funds, through a variety of different resources. We do have local properties active that help to fund some of that, but we're making sure that families have zero barriers for being able to bring their kiddos to school. We don't charge for lunches, we are a CEP district, so free breakfast, free lunch. It's truly a free district, so.
Free public education, how radical.
It is very radical.
Thank you, I understand.
You're right.
Are you sure?
She didn't fuck me.
Oh yeah, without emotion.
Almost uh future meeting date, August ninth, seven P M. That's our regular meeting. We never know, we have special meetings.
Board retreat will be August eleventh.
Now, pushing to it, sir.
Yes.
Don't move.
Aye.
Thank you.